Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Board's work session for Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. We're going to reorder our agenda a little bit and start with the Rockledge Farm special use permit. We have Sabrina Charney-Hall, our Director of Planning here this evening, to speak to the Town Board.
Hello, everyone. How are you? So, tonight is your second visit from the folks at Rockledge Farm, who have taken your last conversation about their project back. They have resubmitted application materials. And before I go through kind of staff memoranda, I really would like the applicant, the Wachtels, and their consultant Jerry Barrett, to go through some of the changes. Because the project has changed significantly since it was last before you, which has changed some of the processes that the town has to go through in order to review this, and ultimately, the Town Board to consider issuing a special use permit. So with that, Jerry, I'm going to turn it over to you, I guess.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here with Bill Wachtel, Madeline Wachtel, Annie Zabar, and Leo Lennis. And Madeline has been really spearheading this effort. So I'm sure she's going to have some comments to address the board. But just to give the brief overview of what Sabrina is referring to is significant changes if the, sorry, if the, if the board will recall, the last time we were before them, Rockledge Farm, was this is the old Twin Oaks. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
And I'm not muted, right?
No.
Right.
Okay, so this is the former Twin Oaks site, and known as 348 Whipper Will Road. And the other properties that used to be involved was the Wachtel-Zabar residences. They have two lots directly across the street. And previously, they were also going to be part of this farm operation. And after discussing this with the Town Board and Town Staff, it was decided to simplify the operation and only isolate Rockledge Farm to 348 Whipper Will Road, which is this area right in here. So that's what we've done, and we've gone through our plan, and we've adjusted our plan to reflect that. And some of the key features to note are, you know, this is the original Twin Oaks Farm Road, right here, that comes in. It's 18 feet wide, so two cars can pass on it easily. And as you come into the central portion of the property, and to the north part of the property is where the farm operation takes place. And previously, let me just blow up a little bit. So it's about a 35-acre property. You can see it. These are the former tennis courts, right here. There's four of them. This was the former pool site. There was a bath house and a kitchen area, and of course, the driveway. And at this time, what we've done is all of the, most of the the farm activity has been moved to the central portion of the site. Let that reach in. So what you see here is this, this red line is the 250-foot property line setback. And we were very careful to make sure that the farm-related activities, including the chicken coop, which is here, and the pastures for the llama and the goat and the sheep, are all within that 250 feet. And as well as the beehive area, which is right here. And the, the, the growing areas, the, where the, where the crops are grown, the produce and the flowers, that's all in this area where the tennis courts have been modified for that work. So we've also relocated the, the, the manure area outside of the 250-foot setback line. So those were some of the, some of the big changes that we made. We reduced the, we reduced the operation to solely the Twin Oaks site. We've made sure that we are compliant with all of the farm animal activities and the manure. And so we think we're on the right track to move this thing along, and we would love to get this thing moving. I know I talked to Sabrina a little bit today, and she talked about referrals to the Planning Board and to the Architectural Review Board. We're happy to go there. And hopefully, the Town Board can grant us, can make those referrals this evening. I also discussed the project with the town engineer today. And if it's appropriate, I'd just like to go through a few of the comments quickly to show you where we, what we've done, what we've done and where we're going. These are some of the details. This was the Town Staff memo that came out. And I think it's pretty self-explanatory. And, you know, you'll note, some of them say, this comment is no longer relevant due to the change in scope. And we just talked about what that change in scope is. So one of the things that came up, and I think the thing that was, was something that everyone's been wrestling with, was the manure area, and how's that going to be handled? And I think what we've come to, talking with Madeline and Leo today, is we're thinking, maybe instead of composting it, we'll put the 10 by 10 pad in, in the location shown. A three-yard dumpster is about this big. According to Leo, the chicken coops, the manure on the site comes from the farm animals. The goats, the llamas, and the sheep is dry manure. That simply gets raped up, put into buckets, brought over to the growing plots, and used as fertilizer. The wet manure, according to Leo, is the chicken poop, and that is primarily found in the, in the hen houses, where they go in every single week, and they muck them all out. And it's a mixture of hay and poop. And they generate about a cubic yard a week or so, which is about 200 pounds. So a cubic yard is about 3 by 3 by 3. This is a three-yard dumpster. I think we're thinking, maybe it would be picked up every two weeks. And the nice thing about this is that, you know, they open the bin, they put the, they, they, they put the hay and the poop inside the bin, they close the lid. When it rains, it's self-contained. It's not going to wash out anywhere. The odors are contained within the bin. And then when the truck comes to pick it up, as you know, he puts his forks in here, and he lifts it up over his truck. And these flaps, they swing open, and the poop goes in the truck. And when he puts it back down, the flaps close again, and the process starts again. So it seems an efficient way to handle that. So that's, that's the direction we're, we're going there. We think that that should solve that problem. Garbage removal, according to Madeline, there's really not a lot of garbage produced at the site, no more than a garbage bag a week. And they usually just put that in their trash. We did also, I apologize that the coverage calculations got inadvertently omitted from the last submittal to you, but we did do them. And this is for Rockledge Farm East, which is known as 348 Whipper Will Road. And you take the total site area, and you get your, your total site area. And the maximum permitted building coverage would be about 34,000 square feet. And we only have 5,600. So we're way under. The maximum permitted development coverage would be about 113,000 square feet. We've got about 109,000 square feet. And that's when you tally up all the driveways and all the hard surfaces. So in the existing condition and the proposed condition, it's zoning compliant in terms of building coverage and building coverage and, and development coverage. And in terms of what's going to be new on the farm, and that would be, this is going to be an animal storage, an animal barn, if, if you will. And Leo has provided me with, with a cut sheet on that. But basically, it's a, it's a long building, and it's, it's set on sonotubes. Those are, you know, they dig piers in the ground, 18 inches deep, down about 42 inches. And it's a prefab kit. It comes in on a trailer, and gets set right down on that. Of course, it'll need a building permit. But it's going to be something that's, it's something like this. There's a, there's an overhang on the building. There's a, the stalls are in this area. And then there's kind of like an overhang in, in that area. And it just kind of looks like a simple animal shed. And that would be the back view. So, and that, that will be placed, you know, as I said, where the former pool area was. So in terms of, you know, the total disturbance, I know it's a question the town engineer always asks, you know, what's the total disturbance? And I had this discussion with Bob today. And, you know, I think because almost everything is here on the site, you know, the disturbance is, we, you know, we got to put this 10 by 10 concrete pad in to put the dumpster on. We got to dig some piers. We got to dig 12 piers to put this in. And of course, there's going to be the fence posts. And, you know, the fence post will be drilled into the ground. So we'll come up with a number with that. The question about utilities, how is the project serviced by utilities? Leo has provided me with the information. There, you see this blue line and this red line. The blue line is the water line, and the red line is the electric line. And they're actually buried all the way. And they come in to, you know, the central part of the site, totally underground. They're already there. And Leo also points out that the water line coming into this site is a two-inch water line, because it was a former pool area, pool club, and they needed a lot of water to fill their pool. So it's, it's got a very, very robust water supply. The electric comes into a transformer box right outside, and that will be reused for the, this was the kitchen, and this will be repurposed as a kitchen for the farm. And this was the bath house, that is contemplated to perhaps be a caretaker's residence at a future date. There's a septic system right here that services these two buildings. Campbell Engineering is working with the Health Department. Michael has said that because it was such a large system to accommodate 10 toilets and 10 showers, that for it to accommodate the kitchen and a, and a couple of beds is not a problem at all. There's also another small septic here that serves this building here. There is some refrigerated storage on the site here. These are the chicken coop areas. This area of the tennis court, outside that 250-foot area, that will just be used for material storage. So, let's see. I also talked to Bob about, you know, he was concerned with, with the traffic out on Whipper Will Road. And he's requested that we engage a traffic specialist, a traffic engineer, to determine what the speed limit is on the road. And once that's established, well, we know what the speed limit is, but to establish what are they actually traveling? And, and then that will be the basis of how far one has to look up and down the road to make sure there's safe ingress and egress. Probably what will have to happen is, there's probably still a little bit of trimming that has to be done on the sides, just to make sure everyone can see. But as you can see, it's a long, straight road. There's good access up and down. There's good siting access up, up and down. So we see no problem with that. And we will be bringing a traffic specialist in there. I did request that that be, that be allowed to be a condition of the Town Board's approval for the special permit, because that may take a little time to get the traffic engineer to get his work done. I didn't realize the extent that, that Bob, I discussed with Bob today, he made it clear to me what he was looking for. So it's a little more than we thought, but, you know, we'll take care of it and get it done. We did note that there is concern about, you know, getting safety vehicles in there, fire trucks. But as I said before, we can, I will talk to Bob a little bit more about this as we go through it. But it's currently an 18-foot wide road. So I think two vehicles could pass now. But if we need to put a pull-off here and there, we, we can do that. And also, the way this site is set up, that a large vehicle can come in and do a K-turn right in this area here as they come in. And we'll provide that on the map. I think a previous version of this plan, we had it. But this is an area that a vehicle can come in and do a K-turn, a large vehicle can come in, do a K-turn, and turn around and get back out. Plus, they have this large area here that's just a big gravel area. So we don't think there's any problem there. Talked about the dumping distance, Health Department, we talked about. So I think, you know, we have a good bead on what we have to do. And I know the owners are really anxious to get moving on this. Maddie, you want to clarify anything?
Sure. I mean, so Jerry, I mean, you covered most of it. And I know you've all met me a couple of times in these Zoom meetings. But I thought I'd just tell you a little bit more about myself, as I'll primarily be the one, you know, farming there. So I'm Bill's daughter, Annie's daughter. And my background is in environmental nonprofits. I studied hospitality undergrad, and then I spent the last five years as the Deputy Director of Billion Oyster Project, which was a New York City-based restoration project, moved up here last year. And most recently, I've taken a flower farming course. I'm really excited about the potential of the space. You know, plan on practicing very sustainable processes, you know, including no-till management, which means that there's actually like very little digging or anything like that. It's really the opposite. So, yeah, you know, we're really just hoping to move this forward, and happy to answer any questions you might have about what we're doing on the property.
So, so if I may, just to summarize kind of the Town Board's actions at this point in time, you know, the applicant has revised the project significantly. Last time, you know, the two most significant process issues were reducing the, the project to one side was a big move. The other more impactful element was removing public aspects of the project. So this is all going to be a private farm. You know, public is not coming onto the site. You received a memo that you have all of your professional staff contributing to, which kind of goes through all of the aspects of the zoning code, right down to the engineering and impervious service. So you have all those details. Procedure-wise, under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, this project as a farming operation is considered a type 2 action, meaning you don't need to undertake a thorough environmental review, and, you know, put together an environmental impact statement and go through that process. As a type 2 action, your review is done under the environmental review requirements. You are required as, because they are before you as a special permit, refer this application for a no more than 45-day period to the Planning Board and the Architectural Review Board. You also have to hold a public hearing on the special use permit that is before you. So those are kind of your next actions. There are many things, many calls for additional information that are very standard of an application at this stage of the game, that many times find their way into being conditions of your approval, or conditions of the special permit. You know, and that's where I'm going to leave you. You know, you, you can confirm that it is a type 2 action. Nick, you may want to either confirm that or not. And then refer the application to the supporting boards, and potentially set the public hearing if you're comfortable. But absolutely, any questions that you have as a board for the applicant or the applicant's consultants or Town Staff who are here tonight to, to help you?
Sabrina, what is the recourse in the event that something we expect not to be impactful, in fact, is, meaning, for example, the way they're getting rid of animal waste, you know, it's in a storage unit, a trash bin, dumpster, probably won't be an issue. But what if it does become? What's the recourse then, or if noise becomes an issue?
Well, it is, and it would be an enforcement procedure. The building inspector would be charged with enforcing the special permit conditions. Your special permit will call out, you know, the, the way the manure is proposed to be handled, to reduce odor, for example. If there happens to be odor complaints, or there's odor concerns, the building inspector will react and act on that special permit, and they will be in violation. They will have an opportunity to cure the violation. If it continues, they could come back before you for an amendment to their special permit, or they can go through the courts. So it, it stipulates normal violations and the, and the actions that occur if a ticket is issued and it's contested. But for the most part, as a special permit, you would put an expiration. Many times, we recommend a five-year renewal requirement, where they would come back in and check and make sure everything is consistent with the initial special permit, or amend that special permit for the most recent changes.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I have a question. I actually think this is a very interesting idea. My biggest concerns, and I talked to Sabrina about it, were, just with the neighbors, were, you know, noise issues and odor issues. So I guess, Madeline, this is going to go to you. Is that dumpster, like, the state-of-the-art way to minimize odor from, from animal waste?
Um, you know, it's a good question. It's, first off, you know, the hay actually has very minimal odor. When it's closed, and it will rarely be open, you know, for more than two minutes, there won't be any odor. You know, there are things like you can put deciduous earth on top of. So actually, just my background at Billion Oyster Project was collecting very stinky oyster shells. So I'm very used to, like, smelly collection. And the truth is, like, when something is sealed, and when something is closed, there's very, very little odor emanating from, you know, the product that you have inside of it, even if it's deep inside the oyster shell.
So I just would urge you, because I'm sure that's going to be a question in the public hearing, I would just urge you to look into that just a little further, because I know just, you know, now is not such a problem. But as it gets to be like 95 and humid, it could really become an issue. I know regular dumpsters, like at my office, don't smell great, and that's office supplies. Like, it's, it's not exactly what you're going to have in there. So I would just urge you to just consider that as we go to a public hearing. And then the other thing is, and I have no idea how to determine this, but how do we legislate around noise? So I'm assuming you're not going to have roosters, because we don't allow that in town. But, you know, I don't know, if the animals are getting very noisy, or there's, there, I mean, look, there were a lot of kids screaming there when Twin Oaks, which was noisy. But I don't know, Sabrina, and that might be a question for you, how do we, how do you legislate noise? Because it's never going to be like a decibel level, you know?
Right. And, and so, in regards to this farming operation, there's a 250-foot setback for all of the animal pens to be away from the property line. That measure in the code today is to ensure that neighbors are protected from the activities of animals. You know, and that's really the, the noise barrier, is that distance setback. Many times, you know, that 250-foot is a minimum, you know, looking at the property and looking at environmental impacts. You may not want to make it any greater than 250 feet, but that has been something that has been legislated to create a separation distance between the, the animals and the surrounding properties.
And I, I just would like to add to that. If you'll, you'll note that the paddock areas where the animals are going to be, it's all in here. And so that 250-foot buffer, that's all wooded. So I think that'll help buffer noise, too. That'll, you know, that'll keep things down. But as you can see, it's, it's, it's all wooded. And, you know, the, the llama pen and the sheep pen, you know, we're not proposing to go in there and cut down trees either. You know, this area is open. This is where the sheep will be, in the open area.
I have, I have a question about the restriction to this side of the road. Remembering that part of the plan for the resident's side of the road was like a lavender field. And I suppose my question is, you know, what's preventing any homeowner from replacing their front lawn with a lavender field? Like, what, what makes that something that, that we actually have oversight over?
The, the only reason it was before you is because it was proposed as part of this farming operation. If somebody wanted to turn their entire lavender field, they could.
And, and they could do that even if it's for a commercial purpose? Or is that what makes?
No, they could not do that for a commercial purpose. That's the difference. In a residential area, you'd be turning it over to lavender fields, because you want your lawn to be lavender fields. If you wanted to create a commercial operation, you'd have to meet the requirements of a special use permit in the town code.
Okay, thanks. That's, I just wanted to kind of understand whether there were elements of the resident's side that could still be in place, because they want to, and garden that way.
And is there still a commercial kitchen here, or no?
Can you repeat that, please?
Is there still a commercial kitchen?
The kitchen is still, oh, can you hear me? Sorry, my wife, getting out before. Okay. The kitchen, you know, still exists as it was. We haven't done, you know, renovation on that space. And there, you know, again, this is, we're not asking necessarily for this permit, but, you know, down the line, we'd like to, you know, renovate it and make it nice and use it internally. So the old structure is still there, yes.
But it'll only be for farm use. It won't be, you previously contemplated, maybe they could have classes. That's all that. It's only for farm use now, privately.
Right. That was my question. Okay.
Well, I'm certainly excited about the possibility of you getting things up and running, you know, and then, and then kind of hearing more about future directions. There's a lot of potential here, for sure.
Sabrina, is it the recommendation of your office that this is referred to the Planning Board and the ARB this evening?
Um, I, I think so. I don't think that we'll see very many changes to the actual plans itself. And as a complete application, it is for you to make that referral, and to even consider setting a public hearing at a future meeting date.
Okay. And you'd be supportive of us taking both of those actions?
Yes, I would. Tom, are you supportive of that?
Yes, I would be also.
And Bob had to go to another meeting, and I'm going to have to join him. But, but I believe he would be, too.
So Sabrina, just one, one other quick question. Do we set a public hearing after, for a date after comments are due back from the Planning Board, in case?
After the 45 days. After the 45 days. Many times, the boards do not take 45 days to respond. There are no limitations as to how quickly or not quickly we can put this on an agenda. The onus is really placed on the applicant to make sure that they provide their application materials to the boards in timely fashion. So you can choose to set a public hearing in June. I can tell you that, that the Planning Board will be able to address this application in May, even their first meeting in June. And the ARB can do so as well. So, you know, I think that if you were looking to, to set the public hearing today, that I would advise you to do it in the mid to latter part of June.
Perfect. And Nick, are you available to speak now with regard to the confirmation that this is a type 2 action?
I, I'm, I'm, I don't think, the answer is yes. I do believe that it's a type 2 action, because it's farming practices, which is recognized as exempt from secret as a type 2 action.
And so, I'm sorry, with regard to that, is that an action? Where, is that confirmation? What do we have to do as a board to, to establish that? Do we need to pass a resolution this evening to do so?
No, I mean, actually, we can incorporate it into the resolutions at the appropriate time. But it's recognized as a type 2 action under the statute. So there's no formal action or resolution required by the board.
Got it. Okay. All right. So are we ready, then, this evening with resolutions to, to refer this to the Planning Board and the ARB, and to set the public hearing for mid to late June, as Sabrina suggested?
Yes, I believe we are.
Great. Well, I have no further questions. I appreciate the, the changes and the thoughtfulness that went into this resubmission. And Sabrina, I appreciate the work that you and Tom have done, and your, your office and your team to, to present this to the Town Board. It looks like it's on a good path, and I'm really excited to see it move forward.
Yeah, it's a very cool project.
Thank you all. Yeah, we're really excited about it. So thank you. Appreciate your thoughts and.
Good luck. You just need to do a motion, second it and refer it.
A motion for what?
To refer the application to the Newcastle Planning Board and the Newcastle Architectural Review Board for report. And then, you know, make that motion. And then, if you wish to set the public hearing for one of your meeting dates in June, Jill, maybe you can suggest a meeting date, and then you would be done.
Yeah, June 22nd. That would give everybody enough time. Okay?
Yeah. And, and I'd have to look into it. It may need referral to the Westchester County Planning Board.
Was that a so moved, Jeremy?
Yeah, as reflected by Sabrina Charney-Hall.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Nick, you got out of having to write that.
I, I was prepared to do so. I thought you might adopt at your meeting, but.
Um, I would like to recommend, submit the copies of the materials to Christina Papes, the Town Clerk, and she'll make sure that they are distributed to the Planning Board and the Architectural Review that they are distributed to the planning board and the architectural review board for their agendas.
Okay, thank you. That's right, the applicant.
I'll check with Christina tomorrow to see how many copies she wants.
Okay, I'm gonna run, folks. Nice to see you all. Have a good day.
All right, Jill, the next thing on the agenda this evening?
Um, I'm thinking let's um, let's talk about the film permit.
Yeah.
Um, as as we have uh both representatives from the filming company and also our neighbors, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Rosenberg, um, joining us this evening. So we have had a request uh from Forty-Eight Heights Crossroad for a uh five-week film permit uh to film a uh a movie um at the address of Forty-Eight Heights Crossroad. Um, neighbor notifications, as required by our statute, were made by the film company. Anna and Laura are both here for the film company, is that correct? Um, and as a result of their outreach to the community, we received comments from neighbors, Markantina Rosenberg. Let's see, um. So according to our statute, um, anything more than seven days requires a town board resolution for approval um for filming on within the town of Newcastle on a single location. As the film company is requesting uh permission to film for about four to five weeks, this requires approval of the town board. In addition, there's some hours involved. Um, our uh film um ordinance um allows for eight AM to seven PM. The film company is asking for a uh seven AM to nine PM daily schedule, and it's also my understanding, Anna, and you're going to have to help me out with the number of dates that there is some overnight hours you'd like to film as well. Um, you should just be mindful of the fact that uh even if we abide um by your request and do uh grant you overnight um filming rights, you would still have to uh keep within the guidelines of our noise ordinance.
Right.
It's very important. Um, and so why don't you talk a little bit about uh the setup that you envision? Staffing, what efforts you're making to minimize impact to the neighborhood? And specifically to the neighbors who are about the property where you're going to be filming?
Sure. Um, first, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be in your town meeting. This is the first one for me. Um, I've done, we've done some investigation on uh where we wanted to film to begin with. This is a very long process and it involves a lot of things. It's not just me, the location manager, but producers, um, designer, the studio. So there are many, many um aspects when it comes to finding a location. I want to introduce myself, I'm Anna Quadra. I've been working in films since two thousand and one and mostly in locations and production in many, many different projects. Um, and Lara Costa Calzado is a wonderful producer. Um, I am so happy to work with her again. We've worked together on other on other films and it takes a lot of chemistry and work ethic for us to put together these projects that are a lot of times very, very difficult. It doesn't matter, small, big, whatever it is, we have to know what we're doing and how we're doing. Um, and minding the community, especially locations, minding really, really important, the community. The reason why we chose this house was because, well, not just because of the look, but because it was in a really large uh area of property itself and it felt really isolated. And we thought, okay, maybe this is something that we can consider because um if we are going to be here numerous days, we want to make sure that we don't disturb anybody. Um, so that's how it whole, the whole thing started. Um, and I got in touch with Jill and Christina, so thank you so much for your time and for all your efforts with our paperwork. Um, I've been talking to, also reaching out to the police department, to the fire department, because we we had some questions about, you know, in general, the town, et cetera, um, permits with hydrants and other things that are part of this. Um, so we, I just wanted to let you know that for me specifically, because I take responsibility when it comes to the community, the location and the crew, I I'm, I have to be very, very mindful of the community and the neighbors. So we have, um, I personally went door by door to reach out to some of the neighbors to say hello to them and introduce myself and and tell them what we're doing. Um, and uh we, it it's such a wonderful community here, especially High Cross, you know, this this street. And what what I found out is that we are really not so far away than we thought. We really have some some of the our neighbors right across from from the lake. So we're talking uh and it's doing, making a strategy so that most of our work happens in the front of the house rather than in the back of the house, which leads to the lake. We also have, uh, the majority of our movie happens inside the house. This house is about nineteen thousand square foot. It has six bedrooms. Um, and it has, uh, how many acres? I think it says eighty-six acres or something like that. So we're trying to contain the majority of the work inside. We're trying to contain the work at the front. We have already uh thought about setting up our lunch breaks by the tennis courts and by the basketball courts, which is which are much farther away. Um, we are interested in renting part of the parking area of the town, which is by the train station so that we don't have that many cars coming in and out. Um, we would like to minimize the impact in terms of traffic of every sort. We would love to work with the police department so that they can help us with our crew because even though we're small, w- we really have to be mindful. This road is narrow. Um, and sometimes the crew wants to be, they want to come to set on time, they want to be late. And they, and I don't want anybody to speed. We want to make sure to set a tone from the beginning to make sure that everyone slows down. They have to be mindful. There are school buses, there are children. I've seen that. I've been here every single day um watching the road, watching what goes on in the neighborhood. Um, so so that's kind of like where where we are, how we are strategizing this this project. Um, we want to embrace whatever the town uh, you know, wants us to do. Uh, we don't want to be, you know, a problem. In fact, we would like this to be a really good opportunity for, say, uh, to reach out to if there is some kind of like a an an arts department or a film department or a theater department in your board or in the schools where we could, you know, talk about our experience or invite a teacher or a student to the movie set to see how a movie is done. Um, we would like this to be a really great opportunity for everybody. Um, so that's that's kind of like what I wanted to let you know.
Great, Anna, thank you so much.
Larry, chip in. I I have very little to to add um on it. It's unexplained very well. I am, I work in the production um department. I'm one of the producers. Um, and I think you should, and and that is like the whole intention of the film is to work with the community, to not be, I mean, we are very aware that we are always a, we always somehow disturbed with our presence. It's because it's a film set and it's exciting, but at the same time, it gets on the way of the everyday life. And so we definitely want to work around um the the life that existed here before we arrived and 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 make it work and create, like, you know, we are doing some, like, we're thinking on doing some little work on the house, so create business in the town. Get everybody that like, you know, local vendors, local cafes, local restaurants, like bring the hotels, like, you know, bring some business into the house and and into the area. So that always like brings life and and brings excitement. And as Anna said, kind of like a sort, some sort of collaboration, not only us arriving here and shooting and living, but also building something and building a relationship with the community. And if, I don't know, if we can create any sort of visit to set for students or we can go to a, I don't know, to a master class and 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 share the experience. I I I don't know what are the ideas, but like happy to run through. And then in terms of the neighbors, absolutely hearing them out, what are their concerns, work together? What would be the the, how we can make their life, um, how we can accommodate? Um, and that's, that's our main goal. And we are here to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Does the board have any questions at this point before I turn this over to uh Mr. and Mrs. Rosenberg? What are your concerns?
What what are the hours you plan on filming? I I think we heard that. Can you just explain the hours you want to film and why you need those hours?
Larry, you want to go? Um, we have, we, our shoot, our movie takes place on 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 the course of one night. Um, the movie is about a group of, um, a group of friends comes to the house for for a weekend. And it's better, Anna, you should mute yourself or you should.
You're echoing a little bit.
Go ahead.
You're echoing. I don't know if you're.
And so I was saying that the film happens, it's it's a group of friends um that go to one house um for the weekend. So the whole film happens over, like, in in the course of one night. And so we have a lot of night work, what do we call it? Um, but we can, because we are inside, we can do what in movie we call day for night. So we shoot during the day pretending that it's night outside because we can cover the windows and we can make it dark. Um, but there are some days that we definitely need to to shoot with 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 the dark of of the night. Um, so we will, um, we can be more precise in sharing which dates and what, but we will need to use, we will need to use some nighttime in order to to accommodate our our film and to tell the story we are, we're making. Because uh, the majority of the scenes take place inside, but we definitely need some of them outside.
How many of those?
It was seven in the morning. So why seven in the morning to start, if I'm not mistaken?
Um, we could pretend, we definitely could start later than seven um in a way. Like some parts, our team sometimes works in staggered ways, like part of our art and dressing um of the set starts in the morning to prepare the set and then the shooting crew arrives a little bit later and then shoots. So we sometimes, um, despite that we shoot between, the the camera crew in a way shoots between ten to twelve hours, sometimes other parts of our team needs to come um a little bit sooner or in the morning to prepare the sets. Especially now with COVID, um, we really have to stagger as much as we can people. So that's why um sometimes we have to, part of our crew needs to start a little sooner so we have time to not be um all together in one location.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, and um I was just asking, do you have an idea of about how many overnights or how many actual nights you would need?
Um, I can come back to you with the specific amount of days and the dates exactly that we would love to. But I think, um, and I don't want to get myself now in a place where I say something that it's not completely exact. But um, um, I think it's four or six overnights, days. Six to ten, yeah, I would have to come back. I I, sorry, I will, yeah, I have to look into it. We could string that, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. That's really helpful as an overview. I know that we do have some members of the community, some of the neighbors who are here who would like to speak about this as well. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Rosenberg, I I can see you. So if you want to uh, if you want to speak, we're happy to hear from you too.
Sure, uh, this is our get off our lawn moment. We're we're looking forward to it, but not really. We we really, we didn't actually ask to speak. We did send a note. Um, and we appreciate that you are interested in what we have to say. And I want to say with Anna has been extremely attentive and extremely responsive and we appreciate that as well. Um, where we come from, uh, well, we come from Japua, but but where we are coming from is candidly, it is astonishing to us that somebody and presumably not an actual resident owner, but a an absentee owner thought this was feasible and and it's, we were guessing and I think it's pretty clear that it was the case that they were thinking eighty-six acres and deep in the woods. And that's, if you just take a look at the Google Earth view, you'll see the house is situated on the very corner of the property next to ours. It's our closest neighbor. It's probably about a hundred yards, which I realize in a lot of places is a, is a nice distance and and it is a nice distance. But still, that's the, that's the place we hear the most. It, we're really not looking to either play the role of the town board. You all do that well. We've been here twenty-nine years. We're very grateful for your service and and for the town. And we're not movie producers. We don't really want to be fine tuning how this gets produced. Uh, so if it were up to us, meaning if if somebody had come to us before, a lot of work and time could put in, we would have said something along the lines of, are you kidding? That that can't possibly be an appropriate activity in a residential neighborhood. And and I've said this to Anna, I feel bad saying it, but but if that's what the board concludes, that's fine with us. But if the board is looking to us to get in the middle and say, no, you can't do it, or here's how you can do it, that's, that's just not something we want to do. We're not comfortable with that. Um, if you're going to let this go ahead, then I think, and again, we don't want to tell you how to do your job. We don't know how to do your job. We don't have the broader perspective you do. Um, but our our thought would be that you are starting down the right road, that if it's going to happen, you got a map. And and Anna's been very responsive. She's been working with us. Again, we don't really want to work on this. We really want to just sit in our backyard and enjoy the woods. But if it's going to happen, then spell out in the greatest possible detail, bearing in mind that it's going to rain some night that they thought they were going to be outside and everything else. But what's inside, what's outside, uh, what's going to be late and how often? Uh, minimize all of that. I've spoken with Anna and she already, I think, completely addressed it. The back of that house is the closest to us. If you go off toward the tennis courts and the uh poolhouse, that's that's less close to us. Want to be careful. I don't want to just shunt this into somebody else's backyard. I don't think we are, but I don't know that for a fact. Um, but it, you know, right now, I think they're playing catch-up and everybody else is playing catch-up because the assumption was do whatever you want in the middle of eighty-six acres. And now they're, and I, we appreciate it, trying to be responsive to the fact that it's not in the middle. It's on a corner right next to us. Um, I, so I think we we'd asked that that gets spelled out and the town have some enforcement, some realistic enforcement mechanism to stick with it because you're not going to shut down production halfway through. I don't think, and I I'm not, that would be even worse than me coming in here now and saying, please don't do this. Um, but get an escrow that says they don't get it back unless you're happy. We're not looking for anything for us. We don't, we don't want anything on an offer to send us away for the nighttime filming. We appreciate it, but we're, we're pandemic bound. We're not going anywhere. Um, so, you know, we we would encourage you, if this is going to go forward, it to to just do everything you can to come up with enforceable restrictions, not just restrictions, but enforceable restrictions. Because we're going to have a fifty-person lawn party next door for six weeks and we're not, we're not happy about it. Um, can it be managed? Maybe. This isn't life and death. We're not going to, you know, we're not going to die. But we spend half our time in normal times enjoying our backyard and that's going to be a little tougher. And then these times, we spend all our time enjoying our backyard. So we would ask you that. And the other thing we'd ask you is, please don't ever bring this up again or let it be brought up again. This should not have come up in the first place. Anna Warren being so nice and cooperative, the jobs weren't on the line. Um, you know, we'd be saying, this is, this is, this really can't go forward. They're halfway down the road. We're very reluctant, as I said, to to try and to be the people who say you can't do this. But it, but it does, and again, we're not the town board. We don't have your perspective, your expertise. But it does kind of boggle the mind, at least our minds, that somebody could propose to be doing pre-production first and then five, four or five weeks of production in a residential area. I mean, a day or two short that happens, you understand. But this is going to be fifty people, a crew of fifty people for week after week after week after week. And we've all sat through the party next door waiting for it to end, but we're going to wait five weeks. Um, so to to wrap it up, don't want to, don't want to overstate life or death kind of consequences. It's not. Um, but if you're going to let this go ahead, we we do ask you to manage it. And and, you know, the production company has made clear that's what they're intending to do. We're concerned about the wishful thinking element of trying to manage the production like that. But, um, we're going to defer to the, to the real experts, to the board, the people with the real authority. You want any questions for us or anything you want us to address? Um, let us know.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Anna, go ahead. If you'd like to respond to that.
Yes. Um, yes. Uh, I wanted to let you know, well, I want to let the board know and the neighbors know that, um, I have my personal cell phone number on the resident letters when I reach out. Uh, so because I need to hear what is the real story on a, on a regular show, on those big, big shows. Um, you have a number that goes to the coordinator and the coordinator checks a voicemail. I never do that and my bosses think I'm crazy because I put my cell phone number in there. But you know what? Throughout the years that I've been working, I have discovered that that's the best way to know what really goes on. And some, sometimes it's easier for me to manage it when I know directly. Because I can talk directly to the crew. I can talk directly to the assistant directors. I can talk directly to the people that is, uh, chattering. I particularly have meeting with the producers. And we would like to put caution tape in the back of the house so that we minimize the amount of people. Um, we don't want anybody that's not like just the basic, basic personnel that needs to be working in the house. Every, nobody should be in the house, really. To my taste, nobody should be in the house. They all should be by the swimming pool or by the, or by the, their cars at the train station if they don't need to be here. We don't have, we're small. We don't have trailers. We don't have campers. Um, we are going to drop off the equipment in the garage and like once or twice only at the beginning. And then there will not be trucks coming in. I mean, that's, that's the whole purpose of making ourselves as small as possible. So that we can minimize that. What is going to happen is probably the, the fans that we have, that's a special effect. Because we have to create some kind of a, a wind and rainstorm. We're going to have rain towers. The, there's just water running, um, but we have to have those fans to push the water towards the windows. And I personally will send letters again to tell all the neighbors, this is what's going to happen. This is what's going to happen. How can we make it easier for everybody? Should we just do one overnight or two overnight and get it out of the way and not do this late? Uh, so that we can stay within the hours of the town. So that's something that, that we could work. We're very flexible. We're not saying this is what we have to do. In fact, we want to have a really good experience and we want to be able to maybe come back to Chappaqua on another show to do some more work. Because the point of what we do, Lara, and especially locations is to build relationships and to keep those relationships. Because that's the only thing that, that can allow us to work the next project. We don't like to, to burn bridges. Um, knock on wood. I haven't burned bridges with any of my locations on the vendors or the, uh, the homeowners or the towns. I really, I'm one of the few crazy people, like I said, that has a personal cell phone. And you can reach me 24 hours. It doesn't matter what time it is. You can reach me. I'm going to be in the house every single day. Um, and I really want this to be a good experience. Um, you know.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, first of all, I, I want to say to, to the Rosenbergs, um, that you were, you were very kind to say that the town board is experts in this area and has expertise. We're, we're actually not. We're, we're going through this for the first time along with all of you, right? So we do allow filming in our community, um, but we have, you know, a seven day limit typically on how long, you know, these, these film shoots are for. This is outside of those bounds. This is outside of something that we've, we've looked at. Um, at least in, in my knowledge, um, in the, in the town of Newcastle before. So we're, we're, we're kind of learning as we go here too. And so I very much appreciated the sort of frame that you put around it where you said, you know, um, let's talk about how we can make this work and then how can we talk about what the future should be like? Um, and you know, we don't have that kind of future statute yet. Um, and I think there's a lot that we can learn from, from this particular experience. I do want to try to figure out how we can get to the best possible experience. And I'm hearing that from, from you, Anna, as well, that that's your, your interest as well. And so, you know, if we can think about, um, you know, the one issue that I'm really hearing over and over is what's this schedule look like? So if we can put some more clarity around that schedule. And also if you can spell out for the town, you know, why you need those extended hours and what days those hours are going to fall on, um, if we can get that put together and then get that in front of the neighbors as well. So they have the opportunity to digest that, um, and come back with any concerns about that. I think that would be sort of a, a great next step that will at least address the issue of this particular situation. Um, and then, you know, Jill, if we can figure out, once we've got that schedule and those hours, and we've heard back from the residents, um, if we can figure out that point about enforcement. So how do we make sure that there are enforcement mechanisms in place such that if, you know, if we have concerns, if we have issues, we're able to, to deal with them?
Well, you know, we, we issue the permit with conditions. The police have a copy of the conditions, you know, our, our building department, our building inspector has, we, everyone's has got copies of the conditions. This is like the worst kept secret ever. It's not supposed to be. Um, everybody's supposed to know about it. So if everybody's operating under the same set of conditions and understandings, there shouldn't be any problem. Um, and we don't expect there to be because they have a huge investment. We all have a huge investment and we live here after everything is said and done. And we would love it to be a wonderful experience where everybody is thrilled to death. Um, that things turned out far better, um, but I'm hoping it's not because our expectations were set so low. But rather that we had reasonable expectations and that they were met or exceeded. And, you know, we're, we're trusting that's the case, but there is a little bit of teeth behind that and that we will pull the permit if they don't comply. And there's, you know, there are a lot of jobs at stake and I know that, you know, nobody wants to see that happen.
Great. So will we be in a position then to be able to do a resolution, to have those, to have that work, to have that schedule and those conversations? And then to be able to do a resolution to allow for this building permit at our next meeting?
Yes, that, that's our hope. So Anna and Laura, if you can take and work on a schedule, we're also, um, a little concerned about the hours. Our film permit speaks of, um, eight AM to seven PM daily. Um, you were actually turning that on at zero a little bit. You were doing seven AM to nine PM. Um, you know, if, uh, if there was construction going on anywhere down the block, they couldn't start before eight, eight AM. We would like that same courtesy. That, that's what our noise ordinance holds for. We, we would ask for that same sort of hours here as well. And again, um, you know, I think maybe, uh, offline, we have a conversation with the chief of police. And we have a conversation about what is a realistic number of cars and the traffic pattern coming into the block so that we're not affecting any school buses. We're not affecting, you know, main traffic times on that block. It, one of the things that makes the, the block so darn charming is it's this, you know, lovely little winding road. But two lane traffic is, is a challenge, you know, even today. And we understand that, but, um, you know, it's got a very, you know, country lane feel to it. And, you know, that's part of its allure. Um, so, but that, with that comes the challenges of how do we safely get people in there without disturbing anyone and without disrupting everyone's routine? So I'd like to work with you things on that as well. And I would like to know, um, the minimum number of nights that you believe you can pull this off. Um, because that, that's going to be, you know, a tremendous imposition, you know? People are, are tolerant, you know, maybe at nine o'clock in the morning, not so much at nine o'clock at night. And at three o'clock in the morning, nobody's tolerant. So if we can keep that down to a minimum, um, I, I think we, you have the best chance of success. And, and we, we do, we'd all very much like that. Okay. So maybe we can talk offline tomorrow. Let's get it in.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just before we ask them to leave and get off of this topic, we did have one resident who has their.
Please.
Who wanted to, to comment as well. Carrie, can we bring Doris Strauss into the conversation, please?
Hi. Yeah. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Um, I don't live on Haight's Cross, but I do use Haight's Cross to get to my residence multiple times a day. And I was just, um, I hadn't heard of this before and I was just curious when I think of movie and film, I think of big trailers. Parked there and I, it's just, I think Jill raised this point. It's, it's even with one other car coming from the other direction, you have to pretty much slow to like five miles an hour because this, it's narrow and a landscaper truck is even worse. So I was just wondering if there will be large vehicles parked along the side of the road there for many days, like how will that be handled? That was just my particular concern. And question.
Absolutely. There, I'm, I'm happy you're pulling it up because it's something that I wanted to, to make sure that it was, um, explained. As Anna said before, there will only be one day where trucks come with equipment and drop the equipment and leave. Um, so we will have all the equipment in the house and trucks will only come in one day. Um, hopefully, um, Friday before we start shooting. Um, and then we are hoping to park all our crew vehicles and cast vehicles by the parking lot, by the train station and have two, um, 15 pass vans, like two, um, passenger pass vans, just shuttling the crew in the morning and taking the crew back to the parking lot. So minimize as much as we can traffic, like in the road and our vehicles. And our, like, we will, like, only have those two pass vans. Maybe the days that we have the special effects, um, the rain, we might have to bring up another truck to, to, to help with the special effects for the rain. Um, but I can also determine which days are those. Um, but we are really, really, we are a very small film. We do not have trailers. We do not have big trucks. The trucks are not even going to be with us for the equipment for run of show. So it's, it's really only our personal vehicles that they will be parked at the train station and just shuttling, um, with, with a 15 pass van. I, yeah, let me know if there are more questions to.
Dor, we, yeah, Dor, they would, they would have to accommodate any vehicles physically on the property that they are on 48.
Absolutely. They will.
Nothing would be on the.
Nothing will be on the street. And the property has enough, like the, the driveway in the property, all the, all the cars will be inside. Um, if I have any, but in terms of traffic, those is what the traffic I am expecting. Um, and then the vehicles will always be in the property. They will never be parked on Haight's Cross, um, road.
Okay. Thank you.
And, um, just one thing, um, Anna and Laura, you know, what's very important, which I think you've probably seen is, is communication. So to the extent you are having those over and overnight, once or twice, um, anything that you think is going to be extra disruptive. If you, um, assuming this goes forward, if you, uh, you know, notified neighbors in advance. So everyone was completely aware and just managed expectations, that would definitely go a long way.
Absolutely. Let me, let me.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And just to follow up on that for a moment, what you may want to do is gather from the neighbors, their preferred, um, method of communication, whether it be text message or email, so that you can notify them of any changes. And we make sure that everybody who lives in the area is in fact, you know, notified much, you know, just so that everybody's aware. So that way changes, there's, there should be no excuse that, that people don't know about a quick change.
Yep. So, and then, you know, on that, on that same note, one of the things that occurs to me is that it might be helpful to us as a community to do some kind of survey of the neighbors. Um, maybe at, you know, a point or two during the process, either maybe midway or at the, you know, after it's all over to kind of get a feeling for, you know, how they, how they, how it went, how they felt about it. I mean, of course, if there's a problem, they'll report it, but, um, might be interesting for the town to, to get a feeling for that as well.
And then certainly, um, if this all goes through, when it's over, I will definitely tap you two to do, uh, some type of masterclass or something at the Performing Arts Center.
Yes, definitely. Um, and by the way, I have been going door to door saying hello. Some people are in, in their work, work from homes and meetings and they're like, oh, we're going, we're going, go, go, go away. And some others, um, have, have some questions. Uh, we've been telling, I have been telling them with one of our assistants about the possibility of an overnight, uh, but that we will let them know. So they are already, most of them are already aware. But I like to do that periodically because I, like I said before, I want to have a relationship. I like to have relationships with them. I, I want them to see my face, to know that they can reach out, to know that they can call my cell phone, to let them know that I'm here also, and that I can help out.
Jill, we good?
We're good. Let's, the board has any other questions?
Okay.
All right. We'll be in touch. Okay. Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you, Rosenbergs.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
So Jill, we shuffled the agenda around a little bit. Um, where are we now? Do we want to go to the affordable housing?
I think so. Let's, let's see if we can.
So the board has before it in the agenda packet, a copy of a draft local law that will correct a little bit of a quirk in the, in the zoning code. And will require that affordable housing be provided in the BR retail business and BRP retail business and parking districts. Um, when the, the town currently has a model zoning ordinance that, um, fair and affordable housing that is incorporated in other districts, but it is not applied to the business retail, the business retail and parking districts. So we've taken the language that is in the model ordinance and applied to these two districts, the multi-family districts. It's the same language. So if you're building, um, between five and 10 units in most districts of, uh, multifamily dwelling, you'll have to provide one affordable unit. And then for anything above 10 or more, you have to provide 10%. So, um, all you need to do then is, um, introduce this local law, refer to the planning board in the county for reporting comment, and then set a public hearing.
So Nick, I have, I have a question about this. Um, you know, I did get a chance to visit with, at 91 Bedford a few months ago. And, um, they were expressing that if they'd had a requirement for, if they'd had this requirement, that they would have been unlikely to build that building, um, because of the limitations of the scope of the site. And that that would have tipped the balance for them as a disincentive to pursue it. So if we're going to add this requirement to this particular category, without an incentive in place to build, then, um, might this have a net negative effect on building? Period.
Unfortunately, I defer to Sabrina, the town planner, to really comment on that. I don't have the, you know, the expertise and discussions with the developer to comment on that. Certainly she can be there during the public hearing or come to the town board's next work session and answer that question. And we'll certainly relay it to her.
I'm sorry. Wait, I'm confused. Are you advocating we don't put this in the law? We don't have an affordable housing component in this?
I'm trying to understand the impact of putting it into law on, uh, on the potential for building.
I, I, I think, I think the way to look at it, at least for, for myself, is we haven't seen much affordable going up with any building anywhere at all. And it should be put into the law, but if most of our buildings are lots or small lots, which you know already, and you can't have large buildings on them, so you can't have 20, 30, 40 units. If you, if you require this, which is good, we should also be considering if we really are serious about it, incentivizing people in some way too. Because just requiring it, when you have a lot that only can have four or five units, so that may tip the balance. I'm, I'm not going to do any building. I'm not going to do any development if I have to add this other market, less than market rate unit. So we, I think in conjunction with that, we have to think out of the box. We should do it a hundred percent. At least that's my opinion. As I said before, I don't know how much value it has if we look at the history of the town where it's elsewhere. We need to consider, how do we incentivize it? If that, I think that's what you're getting at, Lori. Maybe I'm wrong. But I think you have to figure out how to incentivize it. Otherwise it's going to have zero net impact.
Right. I mean, I think this, this particular zoning at the moment, moment has a requirement for a commercial ground floor, right? So there's already a requirement in place in, in use of that property. Um, this adds another one on top of that. And, and I'm just concerned that without an incentive, as you say, Jeremy, that the net effect of this legislation is further disincentive for the, for the addition of, of multifamily units in the municipality. You know, just making our housing diversity problem worse.
You know, we should look at other towns because I know Pleasantville and some other local towns have had a lot of success recently with two and three story buildings where they have had affordable housing. So we can certainly look into those. But I, I would rather see it in than out, certainly.
I definitely think it should be in, but I think.
I definitely think it should be in, but I think Lori is raising a really important point. And I think that anyone that would claim that simply putting this requirement, laying this requirement on top of the BR and the BRP districts and thinking that that is somehow going to lead to additional affordable housing in the hamlet is missing the important role that incentivization, incentivizing, incentivizing would play in making that happen. So for me, we should do it because it's certainly a gap in in terms of our policy and in terms of the policy direction that we've set. But we also need to continue to look at, you know, the form-based code and the kinds of incentives that are baked into that code. And when we see that go into play on North Greeley, then being able to realize that yes, the form-based code incentivizes development and incentivizes the creation of these affordable units. And that's what we want to see then in other places in the hamlet, based on the success that we see there.
I respectfully disagree because I think there are other ways that we can incentivize and have that same development rather than being.
What are some of those examples?
Rather than speaking, rather than it being a foregone conclusion, as you just stated, that the form-based code will happen on North Greeley. I think there are other examples that I will be coming out with of different ways you can incentivize development while still keeping things in the hands of the town. And we can go through that another time, but I certainly think, certainly, why are you interrupting me?
Right now.
Why are you interrupting me? I certainly think that it would be a miss.
I'm just interested in hearing your opinions on this. That's why I'm asking.
Well, if you'd let me finish speaking, maybe you would hear something.
Your opinions now then?
So I think that it would be a miss to take out an affordable, to not include an affordable housing component because I have spoken to other developers who, when the moratorium is lifted, would actually be willing to do that now in current buildings. And I spoke to a developer who actually has a project that was just approved, who said if there had been an affordability requirement, he 100% would have put it in. But since there wasn't, he's not going to, of course not, because it's a for-profit development. So it's a miss for those developers who do want to develop their property to not have that requirement in there.
I think one of the things we could consider for certain sites in the town is lifting the ground floor commercial requirement. And that may that may offer an opportunity to, you know, as an, as an incentive or offer some flexibility around ground floor commercial requirement in areas outside of our current form-based code zone.
Exactly.
In the short term, I think that's a possibility. I don't think that it's a replacement for pursuing form-based code options. But it's certain sites that that may be worth considering.
Sure. It's just one of the examples of things that could be changed in the current zoning to allow for full full residential buildings, residential buildings that don't necessarily require commercial on the first floor. There are a lot of things that we can do that aren't in the current code that should be definitely reviewed. But certainly I would put in an affordable housing requirement while we can now because we're missing out on people who would have done it but for not being required to.
Well, I mean, that horse is out of the barn, it seems. So unless, again, there's an incentive for building that accompanies this, it, I agree with Jeremy, it seems a little unlikely to yield any new affordable units in the foreseeable future.
I don't know who the developer spoke, but just thinking out loud again, there's not that many large spaces to accommodate this. And number one, and number two, whether the developer is being, you know, honest or not, meaning what incentive would he or she have to say? Well, I wouldn't have done it, you know, I wouldn't have done it, you know, of course he would say I would have done it if it was part of the requirement and could have worked out fine. So, you know, the bottom line is there's a lot of moving pieces. And yes, I agree with Lisa, this needs to be added in. But I'll repeat, I just don't know the real actual impact if we don't make other changes.
Okay. Our next step to set a public hearing. Nick, does this need to go to our plan, the planning board in Westchester County Planning Board?
It does, yes. So we need some hearing time to allow for that review.
Thirty days. May. So June. Maybe June fifteenth, give us a little bit of time.
Yep, that will allow the planning board to look at it, yes.
You know what? That's actually like technically a work session. Why don't we put it on a town board meeting? So that would be the twenty second, if that's okay.
Same as Rockledge, and that would be.
Yeah, okay.
And again, Lisa, I want to say thank you to you for raising this issue and bringing it before the town board. I think it was a really important thing for us to move forward with and make sure we close that gap.
Welcome.
Do we have a resolution for that in tonight, or do you want to just use it at the moment right now, like we did last time on the fly? But I think we're, I think we're ready to go on it, right?
Lauren, do we have a resolution for this for approval for tonight? No?
No, we don't.
Nick, you just throw something together and.
I'll send the town board an email with that resolution language. Unless you want to do it now.
Well, yeah, why don't we just?
Just do it.
Let him write it out. And why don't we just take care of the standing committee? Creating a standing committee on Council of Racial Equity.
Great. Well, I'll go, I guess. So the CRE, as we all know, was founded back almost a year ago now in response to a number of incidents that happens, you know, nationally, obviously, and also here in the community. And after being in existence for a year, they've started to think about how to best transition the work that they've done to date to sort of a long-term kind of stable structure for really being able to do the implementation of the recommendations that they that they put together for us. So they they created this sort of announcement. I'm actually going to read it because it's so well-written. So I'll just read it for everybody and then, you know, the town board can discuss. So what, what their announcement says is, as the Newcastle Council on Racial Equity approaches one year of existence, we are proud to announce the official transition of the council to the Newcastle Committee on Racial Equity. This committee will be an official Town of Newcastle committee, stewarded by ten board members, two chairperson, co-chairpersons, and a group of auxiliary volunteers. Reflecting on all that the CRE has accomplished in the last year, we owe a debt of gratitude to the women of color who have led the council of 115 volunteers. CRE team leaders Candace Chestnut, Johanna Nayar, Hermann Charles, Christina Herman, Tanya Tokner, Mindy Park, and Melissa Centrum, and the CRE co-chairpersons, Michelle Maynard Elliott and Zabine Marza. These women face daily challenges with inequities in their own lives, but have taken up the fight to protect others from the same. The unrelenting leadership and advocacy of these women has left an indelible mark in the fabric of our community and created a roadmap for the fight for true racial equity and inclusivity in Newcastle. We also owe a debt of gratitude to the 115 volunteers, BIPOC, Black, Brown, and AAPI and white and other non-BIPOC allies who have put in the time and energy and effort and care for the future of this community to spend the last year creating programs, community plans, education incentives, and offering all means and measure of support to the BIPOC residents of Newcastle and beyond. These volunteers have been staunch allies, listening, learning, and speaking up for those who could not. They've set an example for all of us to follow in what it means to be allies and what it means to truly strive for equity in the community and in this world. The Council on Racial Equity was formed last year in the aftermath of the rate of a race crisis in our country and our community. The intention was for the council to work together for three months. Their mandate was to set, create a set of recommendations for the Town of Newcastle so that it may foster a more inclusive, equitable community for all of its residents. The CRE not only delivered over 300 pages of recommendations, they have provided incredible community programs, outreach, advisory, and guidance with partners across Newcastle. CRE volunteers have stayed on for a year now while simultaneously managing familial, personal, and professional obligations to ensure that the work does not fall to the wayside and to continue to serve the scores of BIPOC residents who have sought support. There's still much work to be done. It is now time to pass the baton to ensure leadership succession and continuity of the work beyond the individuals who form, who formidably ran the first leg of this race. And then they have written a call for volunteers and suggested that we, if we create this committee, that we put this sort of call for volunteers into the newsletter and via our other communication channels. And so I'll just say, you know, having spoken to Zabine and Michelle prior to them, sort of writing this statement, you know, the the CRE has, you know, obviously done incredible work and we have seen that the and benefited from the results of of their their work to date. And we also recognize that this group of volunteers has been, you know, called upon to do the heavy lifting across our community on a variety of of different committees and organizations particularly dedicated to try and to solve this race, the race crisis that we've been facing over the course of the past year. And so, you know, these, these folks have done their duty to the town that they signed up for. And then they went in for a second tour of duty in order to kind of keep going on those recommendations. But they're also mindful, a lot of them, that they're, they're starting to, to, I don't want to say burnout, but to to recognize that sort of a shift in leadership makes sense. And having this become sort of a formal committee under the town with an appointed town board liaison and and the the sort of structure that our other boards and committees benefit from is something that they would, they they feel would be beneficial going forward to to have that kind of a structure. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. I don't know that I'm the right person to answer them. But, you know, my, my thought is that, you know, these folks have done a fabulous job and we should thank them for their service and honor their request to to transition.
I just want to say the CRE is just incredible and the work that they've done in the short amount of time that they've, you know, been the council is phenomenal and I can't wait to see it, you know, move forward. And I definitely am in favor of the committee and that was very well-written.
I've particularly appreciated their approach to intersectionality and really working with our other boards and commissions to to really create programming that addressed inequities in numbers of areas and also partner, you know, with other social justice initiatives within the community that were pre-existing. So they were, they have been a really spectacular model for collaboration. And I'm very excited to see them institutionalized within Newcastle.
The only time I've heard that that term used where I really liked it, you know, institutionalized, I was like.
Yeah, it's not.
That doesn't usually have a positive connotation, but actually here it did. So good for you. I just did want to mention that when we took and we created the the committee, we actually created initially a two and a three-year term because we didn't want the entire board.
Stagger them?
Yeah, yeah, you know, very selfishly, I didn't want the whole board to up and leave after like the first three years. So we were hoping that there would be some continuity in in staffing. So when this goes out in the e-newsletter and the call for volunteers goes out, I would ask that we just put in a little line if people do prefer either the two or the three-year term at at the inception of their commitment to the board, that would be great. And you know, we would certainly honor that if we if we learned about it.
And I should mention that Michelle reached out to me today, Michelle and Zabine both had other commitments this evening. They've been carrying a lot of water. And but she did reach out to me to say just to make sure that I I knew that, you know, they both intend to stay on in a, in a sort of ex officio advisory capacity, you know, to be on call for for the new, you know, it's not as though these folks are leaving town or abandoning the ship in any way. We just need to, we need to get a fresh set of muscles on board to move this.
Heavy lifting, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, the last full topic discussion we have on the work session is authorization to accept the proposal for the environmental design and research for the proposed Quaker Street Water Main Improvement Project. So the funny thing is, is that this is going to sound very familiar to you because we've actually approved the capital project on this. But what we didn't approve inadvertently was the consultant team. So we are hoping to piggyback onto the design team that was hired by the county for the sewer main extension. It the planning really requires that both the sewer main extension and the water main extension be designed by the same engineering group. Obviously, when the county engaged this engineering group, it was only for the sewer project. We'd be engaging them for the for the water project. So what you've got in front of you is a request for that second, for that authorization to actually engage them so that they can go ahead with the design of the water, with the water main replacement. Okay, sorry, that was very complicated. I apologize. Got it? Any questions? And we've got also adoption of minutes. We've got a authorization to award a bid for the spring 2021 street, street, that tree and herb planting. My goodness, I can't speak anymore, sorry. And authorization for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant Annual Chemical Water Bid Award for price extensions. Okay. And then can we go right into the public? Sorry?
I just have to say, my internet just came back yesterday, so I edited those minutes, but I think I forgot to send them to you, Lauren. So the twenty-third ones, right? So I can send those to Susan, the meeting's over.
Okay, we should put them on for next time for approval.
Yeah, definitely.
Great, thanks. Okay, Nick, do we need a motion to just open our public hearing?
Correct, yes.
All right.
I move. I'm gonna just give the title of a public hearing. This is for a public hearing to receive comments with respect to the Horizon Cable Franchise Agreement with respect to performance and community needs. So move, Nick.
Hi.
Okay, the public hearing is open. If anyone is here to attend the public hearing on this matter, please go to raise your hand. And while folks consider whether they'd like to make a comment on Verizon's performance, I will check in with Christina Papes with regard to the public comments received via email.
I did receive one comment for tonight's meeting, and I think the board may have received a copy of it, and I will make it part of the official file on that. Did you want me to read it?
If you have it in front of you, yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. So this was just to the board and it says, I have found Horizon to be a much better television experience than the original cable companies that have come before. We gave them the second franchise for the town. It has been much more reliable. It has been a much more reliable product that has had few interruptions for weather-related problems. As to what we could use for future needs, it would be helpful if the group running our peg channels has a means to display what to see and when, as I have seen on other towns' channels. It could result in more people knowing what is going on. If one misses a meeting other than going to NCCMC as some of the meetings last well past midnight, please enter my comments for the record, and that's from Ellen Schlossberg, a resident since nineteen seventy-two.
Great. Thank you, Christina. So just with regard to tonight's hearing, so the the public hearing, I have a statement from council that I'm meant to read into the record. So this public hearing serves as the public comment period regarding the cable franchise renewal of the expiring Horizon Cable Franchise Contract, Contract for the Town of Newcastle. This public hearing is held pursuant to section six two six of the Federal Cable Act, which sets forth the process for franchise renewal. The town's current franchise with Verizon will expire on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The comments obtained and information gathered at this public hearing make it a critical preliminary portion of the cable franchise renewal process in which the town reviews Verizon's past performance under the existing cable franchise contract and identifies the town's future cable-related community needs. As such, as part of this public hearing, we invite comments from any citizen. As such, as part of this public hearing, we invite comments from any citizen wishes to speak regarding either or both of the aforementioned subjects. The franchise renewal period is the best opportunity for the town to assert its rights with respect to the cable operator and to obtain important benefits in return for granting Verizon the right to use the public rights of way. These benefits include, one, a state-of-the-art cable system now and in the future, two, strong customer service standards, three, free services to community facilities, four, better reporting requirements from the cable operators, five, maximum franchise fees, six, a public education and, and government peg channel, seven, legal protections of the rights of way, and eight, better mechanisms to enforce the franchise agreement. These are just some of the potential benefits available through franchise renewal. Citizens may address any or, any of these items or any other cable-related items that are important to them. And we will now continue our public hearing and citizen comments. So if anyone else would like to speak regarding their experience of Verizon, including any town board members who would like to. I see, we have one hand raised. Carrie, if we can bring your colleague, Lyle Anderson, into the conversation.
I'll just unmute yourself.
Hi, guys. Yeah, just wanted to give you a couple of pieces of information on this proposed contract from Verizon. As you know, that the town is, the NCC and the town has received several hundred thousand dollars of capital money over the last 10 years from Verizon and Cable Vision Altis. They're proposing that goes away, which means investments in things like chat pack and, you know, other things in the town like the Assembly Room, etc. We will not have the money to do as we've had in the past. So that's something to consider, you know, going forward. The other thing is their technical support is, I would say at best is mediocre. Carrie experienced a month outage because they couldn't figure out what the problem was on the connection in Town Hall. So I think we have issues there as well, but that's minor and addressable. But I think the lack of capital, the reduction in the pay payments, that's going to hamstring the town eventually because all that money goes back to the town for capital investment in, you know, audiovisual infrastructure. So that's all I have to say.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Nick, I guess there's no recourse, is there?
Well, we haven't negotiated yet.
Exactly. Recourse is to go through the negotiation process.
But going from zero to, from, from what Lyle is saying to zero, I mean, that's pretty.
Well, they're proposing zero. And what we did last time is we created a consortium with a number of other towns that were in the kind of the same status as we were. And we're looking into doing, and I know Carrie's actively working on trying to do the same thing again, to give us some more bargaining leverage with Verizon. And Altis, they're going to do the same thing. But, you know, they are required to give us funding under the Federal Communications Act of 1977. So question is, how much?
Right. And the difficulty is that the law has changed since the, the last time a franchise agreement was negotiated. The landscape of services has changed, so we need to work within a different, different constraint than last time. But that doesn't mean that what they provided or offered is acceptable. And so right now, we're at what is called the setting the priority stage. Let's find out what are our needs, what have, what's gone wrong with the last one, what didn't work well. And then we'll take that, come to the town board and then start the, start the negotiations. Again, we're ahead of schedule. It expires in June of '23, so we're, we're, we're at the right stage.
Well, the last one took us five years to negotiate. So, yeah, where we, I think we have enough. The second thing is that the timeframe they're proposing on their contract is five years.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, the last one was 15. So, you know, 10 is probably an acceptable number. But five years, we'll just be in a constant negotiation cycle and that's not going to help any of us.
Um, Lyla and Nick, I have a question for either of you and I don't know if either of you know the answer.
And Rob, I would also just point out before you can, some of these comments, because we are going to negotiations and we're being broadcast, may be more appropriately held in-house, but I defer to you as to keep your mind when you ask your question.
Sure. So my question just has to do with what happens when the, when the contract expires. So I'll just mention that five years, the, the last negotiation took five years and we're two years out right now. If this takes five years, do we continue under the prior terms? Do we just get cut off completely? What happens if we don't come to terms prior to the end of the contract?
Well, we're right now in the informal pay stage and at some point we get beyond that where we're not able to negotiate it. We then would go through the procedure with the PSC and get them involved, but it wouldn't be as low, their rights to provide services would expire. We would continue under the, under the arrangement and I'll get you more particulars on that.
Yeah, they, they didn't have, you know, they were, they were new to the game 15 years ago. Prior to that, we only had a sole provider, just Cable Vision. So when Ellen talks about the fact that Verizon has been better, definitely better than just when Cable Vision was here alone.
I don't know if that's necessarily true anymore, Joe. I mean,
No, no, I don't, I don't think it is.
Like the experience of tropical storm Isaias last summer, you know, we had a lot of issues with Optimum Altis in, in, in the town and, and rightfully so, residents were, were quite upset about their response. But they seemed to figure it out faster than Verizon did and they pulled together that sort of intergovernmental call that a lot of the town board members, you know, attended and, and, you know, kind of spoke directly to, to municipalities. It took them a while to get there, but they eventually did that. And we do have a government operations contact who you and I have worked with to troubleshoot some problems in the municipality. We don't have the same on the Verizon side and so that.
No, I, I agree completely. I think that's, that's a very valid point you, you raised. And actually, I was literally raising my hand before to say that I, I really would like there to be some dedicated liaison from each of them, Verizon and Cable Vision, as part of the franchise contract for us. So that we are, unfortunately, these storms are not going away and we really need to be able to reach someone. I'm sure that our constituents would be shocked to find out that we end up with the same busy signal and same, you know, lack of response from contacts that we're given that they do when they take in their call. And the frustration is, is, is warranted. Let's put it that way. So I, I'd love to be able to see that in the next franchise going forward.
Carrie, I see that we have a, a participant with their hand raised.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Rob, we can hear you. Okay, now we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. We lost you for a second. Unmute. How about now again?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, is there, is there a third option or a fourth option outside of Altis and Verizon?
Well, if a, if a number provider wants to come here, yes, they could also apply for a franchise agreement. A reason they need a franchise agreement is because they are using the town's property right of way. So that's what allows the town to get a franchise agreement with that provider.
I, maybe my question, I didn't, it wasn't clear. Are there other types of providers who might also provide the same service that Verizon and Altis do? If one of them, if we were to not be happy with them, if one of them were to choose not to engage seriously in negotiation with us?
There are always other providers out there, I believe, who's going to be in the industry, coming there. The industry is certainly changing with more going towards wireless services and less wired services, more independent streaming channels as opposed to going for the, the cable companies. So it's a changing environment. I can't speak to as to who would be willing to come into the marketplace.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Rob. So Nick, do you want to go over what the next steps are?
Certainly. So we'd like to continue to get comments from the, from the public. So we would leave, I would suggest leaving the, this public comment period open for another 45 days for receipt of written comments. And certainly people can come towards the town meetings during public comment, make additional. So I don't think you need to keep the hearing open in that formal sense, other than just for receipt of written comments. The next steps internally is that we will work with town staff and the town board members to come up with our negotiation strategy, what we need, what we want to ask, as discussed by Lyle, consider a consortium of other municipalities who may be interested, and then start the negotiations with Verizon. We have a draft agreement from them that is not subject to foil because it is a draft agreement contract subject to negotiations. We'll work with, with them. And then once we have what we think is an agreement that is ready for presentation, we will schedule that for a public hearing. Public will have an opportunity to comment on it and then it would be presented to the town board for a vote.
I feel like before we get to the public hearing point in the process, which is a little bit further down the road, you know, certainly we have experts like, like Lyle and Carrie and folks who have dealt directly with Verizon in, in those kinds of capacities. But I, I really would be interested in hearing more from residents about their experience with Verizon. I feel like, you know, just gathering some of that input would be beneficial to us in terms of negotiating the terms of the agreement. I'm wondering if there's a way that, you know, Jill, we could think about creating, you know, a short-form survey for people that could, you know, be publicized in the newsletter and we could kind of gather some, you know, much like, I was going to say like we did for the police reform, but that was not short form. That was long. You know, something a little bit, maybe like hazard mitigation, right? That was a little bit shorter. Um, so you know, just something where we could, we could have a way of gathering some feedback from people on Verizon's performance.
Yeah, we could, yes. And, and Lyle raises a good point that we could do it both for, for Verizon and Altis because we're going to need the information for Altis when it comes down the road, you know, before you know it for their renewal as well. But yeah, I'd love the idea of a survey. I think that, that's a great idea.
We should go back.
Community needs assessment, yes.
We should go back and take a look at the feedback that we, and the public comments that we received back in October in advance of our, remember, we were going to hold a post Isaias Town Board Public Hearing with Con Ed, Verizon, and Altis and only Con Ed showed up. So, and it Con Ed showed up, the others not, but we did get some feedback on them at that time that we could roll into this as well.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's sort of a sad commentary when Con Ed ends up being the, the pillar in the community, right? When it comes to utilities. They're the only ones who show up.
It's easy to show up and say things, whether it ultimately happens as a separate animal.
Yeah. Okay. Christina, just to let you know, I had, I think the 45 days actually ends up on a weekend. I had put a June 21st as my, as the last day for, for comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for resolutions.
Great.
Everyone wants to start?
All right, do we need to close the public hearing, leave open for a public comment?
Whoops, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Thank you, Lauren.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have it in front of me or does anyone else want to do it?
You got it, Jeremy?
Can do it.
Beulah, Beulah. All right, I move to authorize the hiring of Rebecca Blum to the position of Recreation Attendant within the Recreation and Parks Department to perform various tasks at a rate of $15 per hour effective May 5th of this glorious year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
I move to authorize the town supervisor, so the New York State Department of Health designation of water operation in responsible charge, which will designate Christopher Lupo as the water operator in responsible charge of the Newcastle Stanwood and Birch Drive Water Districts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. I will read, I can read this whole thing. It's an important motion. I move to adopt the following resolution, whereas the town board of the town of Newcastle established the Council on Race inequity, also known as the CRE, in June of 2020, as a result of a race crisis in our country and in our community, the council was tasked with creating an action plan for the community. And whereas the Council on Race Equity delivered over 300 pieces of recommendations to the town of Newcastle so that it may foster a more inclusive, equitable community for all of its residents, as well as provide community programs, reach, advisory, and guidance with partners across Newcastle. And whereas the town wishes to acknowledge the work of the original 115 volunteers of the council and express our appreciation for those who laid the foundation for this new committee. And now therefore be it resolved that the town of Newcastle hereby establishes Newcastle Committee on Race inequity and looks to the leadership of the CRE to aid in the transition of this new committee, which will seek to, one, commit the achievement of true racial equity, two, deploy the necessary resources to support sustainable racial equity, three, utilize the power of government institutions and influence and influence to uphold racial equity, and four, work in partnership with others to achieve, achieve racial equity beyond our borders. Be it further resolved that the committee shall be comprised of 10 members and two co-chairs and a group of auxiliary volunteers will serve in the staggered two and three-year terms to be appointed by the town board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to accept the proposal for the environmental design and research entitled Quaker Street Water Main Improvement RFP for, for professional engineering, engineering services dated December 23rd, 2020, and the $650,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Is that the last of them or am I missing?
No, there's two more. I got them. I move to refer a local law to amend section 60-410 to add AFFH Model Ordinance Affordable Housing Requirements to the BR and BP zoning districts to the town planning board and the Westchester County Planning Board for report and comment and schedule a public hearing for June 22nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to authorize the town to engage Bob Wospen Engineering Group in connection with the North Bedford Road Oil Spill for a fee not to exceed $42,600 for the tasks outlined in the proposal dated May 1st, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
How's it?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thanks, all.
Good night.
Good night.